Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 7th. It's 6:01. We're gonna start the work session. So we're gonna stand by the pledge allegiance and get the meeting started. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all. Okay, if you'd like to have the moment silence to all of the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies, as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Tracy, we have a roll call, please.
Justin McLaughlin.
Preza.
Justin McGuire.
Preza.
Justin Vann. Preza.
Okay, so on the work session, old business is first. And the first thing on there is AARP funding projects for the township. We discussed this in numerous meetings. Kind of looking to get an idea of what, who, what to spend money on. And then approach legal firms doing that with those projects and get a verified copy of a resolution we can use to get that going. So, of course, it's different departments. And we as trustees have been asked several times to come up with ideas. We did, we have, in the road department, which I believe was, of course, that's where I was spending money. We have two dump trucks that are... The cabs are in great shape. They've got 20,000 miles on them. They're in pretty good shape, except for the bed of the truck. Those beds, the trucks were buckled out those beds. The beds were put on for a previous truck, from what I was told. And the one, the top of the thing's padded with a cab of the truck. And so, we've got two different prices. A replacement steel bed for, it's just a 17. And then, a stainless steel bed, three or four stainless. That will last us until a truck with a motor gives out for another 10 grand, 27 grand. So, that would be 48 total for those two beds. But that would really help improve the longevity of those trucks. They're pretty much useless without beds. And then, we're gonna need another vehicle in the road department. So roughly 35,000 for another vehicle in the road department. I think we need to buy a vehicle for administration. Whether, be it tomorrow, next year, we're gonna have to have that old laser we have. We put some money in, we put new brakes on, it needs sold. It's in bad shape. And anybody that's test driving, feel free to. And if you think it's good, then maybe you can buy it. But that, the garage door on Quatson Hut, the asphalt repair, I like to do some asphalt repair on AARP money. You pay for half of the things that you have there in... Blairwood project. And we got other projects on Knox Road. We've got different projects we've been getting prices on. So there's plenty of places to spend that money. Other trustees, speak up. You want to give your two cents on what you would like to see this money spent on? And fire department, please, speak up. So, you know, we gotta kind of get our act together, decide what we want to do, and...
Okay, we discussed the doors. It was also mentioned, trustee, me about the parking lockdown station. It's in bad shape a lot is. Concrete ramp on the front of the building. I know when we used to have motors in there, we'd have people following it. Poppers on the concrete. Parking lockdown station 79 is in bad shape. And it was mentioned in, I think possibly was right there about that. The concrete ramp where the engines and handles has come off a massive potholes. I mean, you sweep, you mop, you clean, you pull off, you pull back in, and you brought everything back in. The concrete is just falling so badly down there. So that would be...
So is the concrete on the front and the back, or just a...
Well, we mainly use the front as a pad. Not what we're kind of using as a drive-through. I want the doors come through. We probably will be coming through from the back, just for safety.
So...
What's the status on the back ramp, chief, concrete? Is it in bad shape too?
No, it's not. Neither is that at the front.
It's front of the house.
Probably because it's been used more through the years. And it's like what you guys are doing.
I'd like to say that I had initially asked you guys if you needed anything. So what I suggest that you do is when you go back, take a look at everything that you need, you know, like I talked to you about, and write it down. So that way, we can kind of look at the quote, because you got the quote for the bay doors.
I remember you got that, right?
Yeah, we already had that.
Well, but it's also two months off, and so who knows what's happened to it?
Right, right, right. So, but, so we'll have a list instead of like just coming into the meeting and just bringing it up.
Do you desire a quote for the concrete? We got some vendors out.
You can do that. And just make sure you and Chief Wright kind of come together and take a look at what it is that you need at the fire department, so that we can bring it to the table.
Four doors and replace them approach would be the best thing.
And all the bay doors.
And let's try to use local suppliers, you know, when possible.
All right, well, there... You still have the next meeting next Tuesday?
Correct, yes.
Is that... So your first one, your third one, still is this type of meeting? Is there any difference between the second? Is that still like a budget or...
It's really an as meaning, because we can't have enough, have these special meetings and then have to keep going over these hurdles trying to get them started and having the meeting. So it's best to have it this way. And even if we don't, I think we could even use it for a budget meeting.
All right. We'll get that put together for you.
Anything else for the AARP?
That's what I was gonna bring up is, especially the bay doors.
And you, is the parking lot bad enough to be paved?
Parking lot's still...
It's almost a basic road.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a pothole as you come in that's been there for six years. It's hard if you trip on it.
Absolutely.
Is that not anything that the road department could do?
Although I think that's, you would have paid...
Is it that easy?
Yeah, you would have paid to take care of that. You would farm that out to an asphalt company. So we have private asphalt where we can patch out, bit out, so...
So what's the steps to getting this approved? Do I send all these lists to the attorneys?
We've been, I don't really... We'll make a list out and decide how they go handle it. We got to talk to the attorneys, should we do it right? At least...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean...
So have we gotten things started with that firm, or have you talked to them?
No, no. So, next thing on old business is...
Before the one, do you want me to reach out to them, or...
Well, I got time now.
Okay.
Yeah, I took some time off, I was out of town.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to...
Yep. So, next thing on the old business is funding of the motor roller radials. I know we've had some discussions on that. I guess that's the last payment, and it's a week or two old now. Anybody chime in on what, how, when we want to do with this?
Yeah, I had a discussion with Chief Wolferson, the fiscal officer. We're scheduling, or we have scheduled a meeting on the 17th. Did you get in contact with Wolferson?
He said as long as we get the payment in by the end of the month, I won't send anyone after you. I believe that's his word. We have to end of June.
So we have a scheduled meeting on the 17th at 3 o'clock to talk about finding the money for that.
Does it need a customer's...
What's the last installment, like, is it 8,000?
$15,585.28. Now that I say it, 89, 99 is about 15,585.
And the original purchase price is like in 40 grand range.
Five year, what's five year pen?
Five years times, is it that exact amount every year?
I knew it looked there.
Well, it's 75,000. Oh my God.
Is that something you expect the last few years, years, or something we've got to sort of place this in?
Until the standard changes and go to all the DZs.
As soon as you say that.
Okay, gotcha.
And a breakdown.
Yeah. Okay, so the next one, I don't know if we need to discuss, talk about too much. Contract for the township administrator.
So with that one, it was just the employment agreement that legal looked over and approved. So if you look on the second page... Excuse me.
The quote he gave us?
On the second page at the top, at number seven, where it talks about the cellular telephone allowance. That is what was different from what you all seen in the email. So the hundred dollars is what we have to be voting on.
I'm gonna do that, allow him here.
Why, was that a mountain or...
And you spoke to, you've spoken to Chrisandra, I bet she's good with it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so what the...
We're gonna have to vote on it and... I'm sorry, that's it.
We used to motion, you know, we accept that, or what? Because it's, so we passed the resolution 038 to hire her, and wasn't that attached to that resolution at that point in time?
No, the agreement was not attached. The only thing that was attached was the JavaScript.
Okay. So how do we want to handle that?
So you narrowed down where we're at with, is, what's the election on the vehicle?
Oh, as far as whether she wants to drive the vehicle?
She know it's a laser?
I told her about it. I told her that I, but I didn't want to speak for her. Because I could tell her one thing, and when she gets in it, it's a different story, like Justin McLaughlin said about that, the vehicle.
Just said that she'd be provided mileage reversion.
Right, so she gets the option, either she chooses the vehicle or she gets mileage reimbursement. That way, I truly believe once she sees that she's not gonna be able to help.
Have you thought of issuing a gas card offset? So you're not offering car allowance, but offer a gas card to, like, one of the, one of our gas cards? Where you pay the fuel?
The wind card?
Until, I suggest until we get this straightened out, we don't submit anything. Because it's screwed up right now. Somebody needs to re, that needs to be revamped, and I just don't have time. I've got too much on my...
I think legal need, yeah, and I, legal need to look at that, because the per mileage, the gas, you know, the gas reimbursement or the per mileage, a set figure by the feds.
Yes.
Where you live, and the city you live in and all that. If you pay them gas, if you want to fill their car up with gas, I think that was a public cat words, and she's still got oil changes, great jobs, maintenance on the vehicle, they'd be compensated for. And how much do you pay for that now versus, I said, we pay the mileage?
It's called per diem for the cars. There's a per diem, and then includes maintenance and all that stuff.
Right, right.
So it's not a fee for the gas. Who knows if it went up because the gas went up too? We'll have to look that up and see.
It'd be the feds, feds, the feds.
Yeah, we have to look that up.
Yeah.
You mentioned in the AARP funding that you're thinking of administering car. How much are you thinking if we got a car to cover that?
Well, I think it would have been 35 or 40.
So you're talking buying it?
Close to it.
You also gotta see if that's covered.
Targeting used up all time and time and time again.
You also gotta see if those funds are covered. As far as that's done, unless it's covered on the AARP.
Yeah, that's, well, because we, I was at a meeting we went to, they bought...
You gotta come up with some good explanation. They said a lot of stuff was...
Yeah, okay, well, then legal, if we contacted legal, they would have still that.
Yeah. So you really can't say what you're gonna do with that money till you find out.
Okay, so the next one's another easy one. We just had to verify some codes. Next one on old business is paying for the cleaning of the cattle center.
I hope you guys noticed that, noticed any difference? That they came in and they cleaned, they did a good job. And I just needed to identify where the money to pay for the cleaning for would come from. And that is what I identified in the email that I gave you all. So that Tracy is aware where to take the money from. It's $120 a month. They come twice a month.
For what, the cleaning supplies?
And we have to pay for our own cleaning supplies. So that is something, that also can come out of that same.
Okay. Give it to that Tracy.
No.
No?
No, because, yeah, who's gonna get the cleaning supply?
Well, for now, I don't know that...
And where are we gonna get the cleaning supply?
Now, didn't you say you go to Amazon? Is that hurt? So we can't get with, um, Assistant Chief Wolfson to see how they go about ordering theirs. Because you guys have an, do you have an Amazon card?
No, we had an account, but it was suspended back in December.
Okay.
Problem is, I was removed from it. They don't talk to her, they don't talk to me. We're not sure who they'll talk to. So it's one of...
Was that Amazon?
Trying to get it, get it.
The man that's not on the account. And his name was especially long.
He just said he thought Lisa was the one that was on there, so...
I'll check with her tomorrow and see if she buys stuff off her. Not this year yet. They will shut down December 13.
I mean, we can buy stuff from Amazon, just can't buy from a credit card. You have to use a credit card.
Yeah, our business accounts will shut down December 13.
Okay. So, we're on to it. I'll just kind of sit down and write down all the things that we need as far as the supplies and get with to see how they go about ordering. And because we need to get something in here before the 17th, I think it is. Is the next time they come.
So how is the schedule set up? Is it like, is there, they come twice a month, right?
Yes, they come the first and the third, two, the Thursday. And the gentleman, yes. And it works out well, because the blood guy comes on the third Thursday as well. So they all come about the same time, right?
How can we get out of there? So they're doing, somebody else might make, because they're doing other licenses here.
Yeah, but...
Yes, yes.
One of us, I come through with the blood guy, and he came in with the gentleman coming in last.
Oh, getting into ADA, okay.
Right, right. And then had a clean up the back area, but, yes. So that's how they got in. But when they come back again, the ministry was supposed to start on the 13th. So somebody will...
Okay, that's, okay. Okay, last but not least, the last item on old business of the work session is the funding of legal services. So this is gonna be a little tricky. So, from what I see, we owe, we have 50,000 promised to Taft. We have 35,000 promised to Dinkler. Then we owe 5,090 to Karma for the legal, for the Steve Roush case.
Okay, let me jump in on this. Taft, first thing we're gonna have to do is decide what percentages we're gonna split between the employee funds impacted by the unionization.
So, do we need somebody legally telling us what that is? We don't make that decision ourselves and get in the office, do we? I mean, how even, how's that gonna get the bike up?
It's fire in the road.
I mean, it's either, it's either it's fire in the road, or what do we do, 50/50? Or do it by headcount and wait a lot of it? Because all of the employees are on the fire side. That's the question we gotta answer before we start pulling...
So we already paid our bill, we pay the 50/50. It doesn't say we don't have to, you can't change it.
So we're gonna stick with 50/50?
You don't have to. I'm just saying that's what he did to pay that. Now, we can change that, as long as it's not past the end of the year. If you guys vote on a way to do it, I can go back and adjust that.
Okay.
But you guys, you don't have to call attorney. You guys make that decision.
No, I spoke with Taft as far as the pace of our billing. You got an email on that. All of you should have seen that. But basically, we're gonna have a little bit of a lull in the process, so the Taft bills should slow down, and it'll pick back up in 2023.
It's almost at 45 now.
Taft is gonna, Taft's gonna call a meeting with us. We'll need an exec session, probably about the next 30, 45 days to give us an update. And also strategies for the, for the next steps on that there.
So we already billed 45 already. Not the 4,000, not 1,500, 46, 1,600 is left, how the 50? And they probably got that this part of the month already. So 50 is already used up. That means you gotta come up with some other money. So this is already the second?
Was that an NTE?
Yes, that was the NTE.
So you've already sent some checks to them?
Just the first payment, there's two that came in and have a good pay. The first payment was for 13,492.
Well, I don't think 50/50 is quite fair. I know the fire department, I agree with that over there. But I don't think that with two road guys and on how many road, how many people on fire, but I don't think 50/50 is quite fair.
Well, that's why I brought it up.
Right.
The bulk of it comes from the fire department. Because we only have two in the road department. So we have to, we got lots to hit by.
I mean, if you come up, so if you come up with a number, 75, 25, we have to... Is it just what we say is okay with the auditors, or...
No, we should get a piece of paper and ask what you will, and it's okay. No law, there's no law in that. No law that we have to comply with, that the trustees make that decision.
But I think what we've been billed for, just based on my conversation with them, we're, we've seen the bulk of that. There's some incidental issues, like they have to certify the boat, that part of the process. But after that, he said things will get quiet until 23. So we can start plugging in the next wave. That, and I assume they'll give us some guidance on what to expect there.
I don't disagree on any of that. It's just that we gotta pay what we owe right now. And then the other one can work itself out. So we gotta make the steps to pay this. And once you get that step, it's gonna be the same, no matter what the price is. You just have to determine the total. So I, I agree with you on that. It's just that we need to know where we're gonna get this money. And I said, I told you where we're getting it right now.
And that's the purpose of what we need to be doing, is identifying where the money's coming from.
Right. So every time you do a resolution and you say, like, Dinkler, 35,000, you need to say where it's coming from?
Well, no.
I was gonna say, Dinkler issue last. I wanted to touch on the Roush issue real quick.
Okay.
That invoice around numbers, 5,100. I recommend we use the, there's 34,000 in salary under the zoning salaries. Use 5,000 of that toward to clear that item. Since that position is vacant. That's the quick and easy way to pull.
They used that, it's 51? You wanna use 51, not 5,000?
We had the exact number, it's 5,000 and...
Right, but you can use 51 out of that amount.
Correct.
Okay, so let's go back, we have finished the Taft ordeal. So we have 50,000 on the table for Taft. 50/50 is not fair. And it's not really fair, the road department, to take, okay, so if you do the two guys and 50 guys and do the percentage thereof, how about 75, 25? So 75, 25, I did the math, is 12,500 for the road and 37,500 for fire.
Okay, where you gonna give them?
Okay, so how much is, um...
That's just the funds, yeah. Did you bring your progress this week or whatever?
I didn't, yeah, this year.
Did you kind of, did you do any, you know? I can have, they go on here. 20, 31, no? So... I'm gonna say just 12, 22.
That's for the road?
Yes, for the road. 22, 31. Okay, so are you looking at the progress? Okay, so are you looking at the appropriation sheet? If you look at, at the top of each thing, there's a, a line, there's a line that says pool balance and not, and total cash balance. That's how much you have in that plan.
So far, as far as the road department goes for the Taft ordeal, we take out, we have twenty thousand appropriated contracted services. We have eighteen thousand left, we wanna use two. So let's take twelve thousand five hundred out of contracted services. Two oh two one, three three oh, three six oh, four zeros. At least we, what, fifty-five, five, five thousand five hundred left in there.
You have, you're looking at the undercover balance, but?
Eighteen grades.
Looking at the undercover balance?
Correct.
I see. Okay. That's where you wanna take it out. Now, um. Now, as I was explaining to you guys, if you ever want to track this, you just can't keep randomly taking stuff out of funds. You need to move it into appropriate fund and then take it out of that.
I, I, I know that Tracy, so we're just talking about where the money's coming from. We'll do a resolution to move the funds over from there, from contracted services to legal services number, which still has thirty-two hundred in it. Two oh two one, three oh, the number is. We have to do a resolution, move funds. And we'll do the road department, do the fire department, when we find those funds, the same, do all the same resolution. So take here Taft. Now, so Taft is firing a road. Dinkler and the Steve Roush thing is all general fund, that's gonna be a problem. So we can get thirty-five grand out of general.
Well, who's to say it has to be on general?
It's out, you can get it out of trash, pay the trash bill.
Was that the, the check when you signed, is that the total bill?
That's the total bill for the.
Well, the Dinkler bill, because one of the issues in that legal action impacts the firing employee. So I went through.
That's why you moved him to fire, yeah, okay.
Okay. You've got auditing services, there's ten thousand in the auditing services line and general fund. And six.